Rise for to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call for a motion of the acceptance of the minutes of the September 19th, 2023 meeting. They moved in seconded discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Public forum for this evening. No one. We will move on to presentations for this evening. Crystal Caban and Sean McKeever, senior class trip.
And the class advisors.
And the class advisors.
And the class officers.
Class officers.
Hello, I'm Neveah, um, I don't know. Hello. Hello, I'm Neveah, senior class president.
I'm Suriya Cromwell, I'm the vice president of the senior class.
I'm Megan Wright, and I'm the co-treasurer of the senior class.
I'm Danielle Mabrenno, treasurer of the senior class.
I'm Garciana Walters, and I'm the secretary of the senior class.
I'm Crystal Caban, and Sean McKeever, we are the advisors of the senior class.
So our senior, can you all hear us? You've got to talk close. So our senior trip this year that we've planned is to Ocean City, Maryland. If you all, Neveah was nice enough to pass out packets of what we have. We made a presentation, which is a little bit more fun than this little presentation, but has all the information in it. So we did our class trip through Four Winds, which is a domestic and international tour and travel business. So the trip would start on Thursday, June 6th. And we would leave from Allenville School District at 8:00 a.m. We would drive right to Ocean City, Maryland at 12 o'clock. We'd stop for lunch and, ooh, goodness, sorry. This lunch is on their own. I forgot to note that in there, but it is noted on the sheet. Yes. So we go right to the, oh, gosh, I'm going too fast, I'm sorry. We go right to the boardwalk. And we are there for about, oh, man, I'm sorry. We get there at 3:00, we go to the boardwalk, we stay there till about 5:30, and then we go to the Bonfire Restaurant. Oh. Take a breath, Sean. Okay. Sorry about that. We go until about 4:30, then we go to the Bonfire Restaurant. And then from there, we will go to a place called Speed World. It has all go-kart tracks and all that fun stuff. This place has about 10, if you turn to the next page, it has about 10 different tracks. Two of those tracks do require valid IDs and driver license. This place also does require a waiver for students to sign, which we are in contact with them to get it. They also have a roller coaster there as well. Oh, and here are some pictures of, that is the entire place. And then this is that roller coaster cart thing that is available to them. From there, we will go to the hotel, which is the Hampton Inn, and we will get there around 8:30. Oh, we're leaving around 8:30, and we will get there at 9:15. Upon night, there is a security guard at the hotel for us as well.
So day two, I am seriously hoping that we run into some ponies, if anybody knows me. But, so the hotel provides a breakfast for them. Then by 9:00, we'll be taking a cruise by boat, and again, I hope we see some ponies. So we'll get there at 9:30 to board. By 10, there's an 80-minute, and then you could turn the page. There's an 80-minute tour, cruise through the bay to see the wild ponies, their natural habitats, explore the marine animals, and all of that. So by 11:15, we will depart for the Ocean City beaches. And then they'll have a beach boardwalk day by 11:30. There is a, what do I want to say, lifeguard on duty the entire time that we are there. Yep. Lunch on their own that day as well, on the beach. Then we will depart for the hotel by 5:00. Depart for your hotel, 5:30 arrive, and then we're going to head to the amusement park for the evening. And that's, anything that they need to know about that? That's a regular, right, on the boardwalk amusement park, all of?
The included in the trip, each individual will get two rides at the park, and they get $20 meal voucher for dinner. And then any extra money that they would like to bring for games, like carnival games, extra rides, or food, will be their own. And then we leave after, at 10:00 p.m. on the amusement park, and we arrive back at the hotel at 10:45 that night. For day three, we will leave the hotel at an early 6:30 in the morning. We are going to Hershey Park, which is in Hershey, Pennsylvania, and we will arrive at the park at 11:00. This is another day that lunch is on their own. At Hershey Park, they will be provided a mission, and that includes the Chocolate World, all of the rides, the Chocolate Town, the Ice Cream Parlor, the Sweetery, all the good things that Hershey has to provide. And then from there, they are given a meal voucher for dinner at Hershey Park. We will leave Hershey Park at 6:30 and arrive back at Allenville at 10:30 p.m. And on that last page, there's a breakdown of pricing. So at the current moment, we have 64 students who are interested in taking the trip. Oh, my fault, sorry, I read the wrong number. We have 54 individuals interested in taking the trip. In our current class accounts, which I think we sent, you all have a copy of that?
They do have a copy of it.
We have 41 students with money in their account. 31 of those students, we just updated it a couple days ago, because we had a few new students say that they were interested in the trip. 31 of those students are interested in the trip. 23 students do not have money in their account. What else do I want to say? We have four fundraisers in the next coming months, in which students can add money into their personal account. Right now, we are selling the chocolate cornucopias. We are also selling Christmas wreaths and other Christmas decorations. In December, we will be selling popcorn, and in January, we will be selling coffee. And we are looking into other different investments into their own personal accounts. Do we have any questions as of right now?
Yeah, one of the questions that jumps out to me here is that I see you have $20 cash out for dinner at the concessions. As you know, the prices have skyrocketed recently, and I don't think $20 is going to get you too much as far as concessions go, but is there an alternative plan? Are you looking to expand that? Have you considered the excessive jump in the retail prices, especially at concessions?
So I would, I believe that that covers a meal though, correct? It's a whole, it's a 20, or is it $20 cash?
It's a $20 cash that we will be giving them. So that $20 is included in the price package of the trip. So if anything, we can, if we're looking for, you know, an extra $10 for a meal voucher, we can add $10 to the price of the trip.
So I'm correct, am I correct in assuming that they have a choice of whatever concession they want to go to, correct?
Correct.
So the $20 is supposed to cover a meal at a concession stand. My point to this is that the prices have skyrocketed. I don't know how much food or they're going to get for $20. I know that you can go to a concession stand just at the Dutchess County Fair and pay $10 for a soda. So, you know, that is, that's my concern, that they may not get an adequate meal for that low of a price. So I'm asking you, is there an alternative? Have you thought about expanding the amount of money from $20 to cover that?
Can we expand it? And also possibly doing some research to find out types of prices that are expected?
Yeah, making contact with, we can contact the boardwalk to see what kind of prices, and I'm sure they have a website that we can look up.
Or let Four Winds do it for you. They're the travel agent. Let them do the legwork.
As far as the schedule, the schedule goes for the seniors have to have, to be able to pay for the whole trip, you have a scheduled breakdown of when they're supposed to be paying their money.
Correct, yeah. The payment would start on October 27th, would be the first installment. And we are looking for six installments of $100 once a month, so October 27th, November 27th. We decided to skip the month of December, January 27th, February 27th, March 27th, and then April 27th would be the last one. It would be, according to these numbers, it would be $102 rather than $100.
And what happens if a person gets down and they're $100 short come May?
So we have extra, we have certain, oh, sure, we do have some extra money set aside for those types of instances if they do happen. Yes, donation wise and.
Yeah, because we want to make sure every kid gets to go that wants to go.
Correct. Yep.
Jody?
I have a couple concerns. My first one is the amount of alone time. When you put down alone time on your own, are you meaning they'll be broken down with their chaperones?
Alone, lunch on your own just meant that they're there to pay for it on their own. Those are the ones that are not included.
Okay, so it just says in pictures, like when you arrive on the boardwalk, it says, stretch your legs, take pictures on your own on day one, and then on day two, or is it day three, that you have like three or four hours, and it says on your own. Time for souvenir shopping and lunch on your own. Are they broken down into groups with chaperones that will be with them at all times?
Yeah.
Okay.
So no one's really on their own shopping away?
Correct, not on their own. Mostly on your own was, I think, referring to more of financially on their own.
So the three lunches that are on their own in the past, I know is a concern of the boards of the students having the money to be able to pay for that. So I thought in the past we had recommended maybe doing a fundraiser and just earmarking that for helping contribute to the lunches for the students, so they're not possibly going without meals while they're away.
That's a good idea.
And then one other question, the go-karts, the ones that need the license. I know these are a little bit more in high-tech. And are we even going to allow our students to take them, to rent them if they wanted to, if they did have a license and brought extra money? Or are we going to ban that section from our students for liability purposes?
I believe that was going to be a waiver that was sent home to the parents, so the parents would have to be on board, correct, if those students wanted to take part in that.
Can our attorneys look that over? Because these are pretty fast.
So what I'd like to suggest, and the officers can come up and meet with us also, I think, and you can ask the advisors from last year, the permission slip that you put together has to be very specific. So there have been issues, not in our school, but in other schools, where parents didn't know their children were going to a beach. And even with a lifeguard, had they known they were going to a beach, they might not have wanted them to go into the water, and the chaperones would have had no information, because maybe someone's not a strong swimmer. And you don't want to be in a position where parents don't give you permission or don't know, and then you're, you know, something, God forbid, could happen. You want to make sure that parents know exactly where their children are. They can opt out of any events like this. And then just because, I know I'm really excited about this trip. I know last year's class did a trip like this, but I think that we've seen some tragedies in the last couple of months with the Farmingdale. Just need to make sure the buses are inspected. Mr. Napoli can help you with that. That the drivers are 19A certified from New York. We want this to be a really great, safe trip. And we want everyone to be safe. So there's things that, if you come up, we can help you and guide you with that. But as far as the go-karts go, as a mom, I might not want my children to do that. You're going to have to be really responsible and say, nope, this is not an event. Or you might all determine that this is not an event you even want to have some kids doing. And that's up to the class, right? That's up to all of you, but you still need parental permission. And your permission slip should be very clear for each one of these, so that you know who can do what. And I'm concerned about the buses, you know, especially after what we saw. We want to make sure that the buses, are you using rolling V for the buses, or is a tour operator getting buses?
It's the tour operators getting a bus.
Okay, so it's not, we're going to check that with you also, because we need to make sure, like, for our buses, I get a list of all the drivers, that they're certified, drug tested, all of that. Sometimes when you use a bus company that's not our bus company, it's okay, but we need to make sure that their vehicles have been inspected. So if you guys want to spend some time with Mr. Napoli and I, we can go through those things with you. There's a checklist that our insurance company gives us, and we can talk about liability. We don't want any issues. We just want everyone to be safe, but we want everyone to go into it, especially the parents with, you know, full disclosure and knowledge on what's happening on the trip.
Yeah, and we can definitely contact Four Winds to see if there's an alternative event that we can do, rather than the go-karts.
Right.
Just to see if there's something on the more safer side for students.
I just have one other comment. I know you have a lot of fundraising kicking in, but you're, I think you need it, right? And the students need it, so really get out there. I know that if you contact Mr. Napoli, he can get information out to the community. I know we're putting some stuff up on the website. And you really should have a contingent plan on what happens with those students, or if you don't raise those monies, because the price then kicks up, right? It's 602, but if you drop down to 40, it's 650.
Correct.
And kids, our students might not, you're not kids anymore, young adults, sorry. You want to make sure that you can cover that, so.
Correct. And this group of officers, that's what I'm looking for, has been absolutely fantastic with helping us fundraise. Our last fundraiser, we made over $6,000.
That's great.
And that's because they were constantly pushing it, getting their classmates to help, and so we're looking forward to working with them this year.
Great.
Iris?
Press the button. Actually, the information said that the pricing is based on rolling V bus companies. So I'm assuming they're going to go there. So a couple things. One is, this board has worked diligently on creating a reasonable policy about senior class trips, and I just hope you all have read through it. That's one thing. The other thing is, is that it notes in here specifically, it says note, all activities are weather dependent. So do you have a plan in place if the weather does not cooperate with you? Because that's something I think would be essential, right? You know, you have to, you don't want to sit in a hotel or walk soaked on a boardwalk all day, so. So I think that, you know, I would like at least the superintendent to see what that plan is, if that's okay with her. You put that together for her. Lisa, is that all right?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you.
That is something we will get to you by the end of this week.
Yeah.
Jody?
Thanks. No, I was just wondering on the waivers too for the go-kart, if they decide to do them, is it student that have to sign, or is it parent and student?
I think it's going to be both.
Okay.
Parents have to sign off on permission slips for all of this, and we've gone a step extra that the activities. Look, I'm just going to say, there was an incident in New York City with someone went to a beach.
Yes.
And the parent didn't know that it was, they were going to a beach, and there was no lifeguard, and a child drowned at the beach, and the parent didn't, said if I knew my child was going to a beach with no lifeguard, or even with a lifeguard, they wouldn't have gone on the trip. So it's just important that we're communicating back to families on exactly what all of those, all of those activities are.
And maybe even on our permission slip, if even like the level of swimming, you know, how they are. So if we know our chaperones can keep an eye out for students that maybe are not strong swimmers, or keep them, you know,
We just want to make sure everyone's safe, you know, that's a point.
That's all, absolutely.
And listen, I know it feels like we just beat you up, but we're not beating you up.
We're just trying to.
We expected worse. We expected worse.
Yeah, we want you guys.
It's going to be a great trip.
These are a lot of great ideas.
We want all of you to have a great time. We want this to be memorable, obviously, but obviously there's, you know, we live in a very litigious society, and safety is above all else. It's primary. So I think that then we want everybody to have a good time and an equal chance. So I think that's where the questions are coming from. John?
Yes, thank you. Mr. McKeever and Ms. Caban, it's obvious that you've done your homework, because it's hard to come before this board and get these types of things approved. We have, as the president stated, you know, a responsibility to make sure that everything goes. But you've obviously talked to some prior advisors, because you brought the kids with you. It's always harder to say no when the kids are here. I know from years of experience that one of the ways of guaranteeing your entry into heaven is to be a class advisor or run a senior trip. So if you pull this off, you're in. I like the fundraisers, and I think it's really a key. A lot of board members, a lot of administrations will ask, what do you do with the kids that don't have the money? What do you do with the kids that come up short? I'm a firm believer that the kid earns their way on the trip, and we're constantly asked to support fundraisers. So that's not a problem. I don't like giving money to a kid that didn't do anything while everybody else was working their tail off. I once remember the great philosopher Jack Henry, who said, if you really want to raise money, go the Krispy Kreme route, because I'd like to support this trip, and, you know, I'll suffer through eating the entire box of Krispy Kreme. So good luck, and any way that we can help out, we will.
How do you think we made $6,000 on our first fundraiser? It was Krispy Kreme.
All right. We want to bring this to, I mean, if we ask them to make the corrections and make this contingent, can we approve this tonight? Can I get somebody to move this to approve it with the contingencies in place?
A motion to approve the trip with the contingencies that the superintendent outlined.
Then moved in seconded. Discussion. All right, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Have fun.
Thank you for your time. Do you want me to take this off?
Mr. Napoli's got it. Don't worry.
I just want to give a shout out to Neveah Roller, our class president. She played in the Mahal Tennis Championship today. She won her first round match. Unfortunately, we lost to the second seeded Spackenkill, which is a really close match, but, and then the rest of these ladies all played a soccer game today. So big student athletes over there.
All right, moving on to reports and information and correspondence. For myself, got an opportunity to tour the brand-new cafeteria, and I can say that it was very well received, but from what I saw from the staff, and the children really enjoyed it. And I think that they did a really good job down there. Vince, wherever you are, there you are. I think they did a really good job, and I'd like to give a shout out to the monitors and the cafeteria aides and everybody, and the cooks, and everybody that works down there, because they really came together, put it together, and, you know, on the first day, while you would expect there would be a lot of glitches, I think the very few glitches they had, they worked through them very quickly and expeditiously got the children out of there and fed. And I'd just like to say thank you to all of them. Vince, could you pass that along? Anybody else for this evening? John?
Yes, Mr. President, off your sterling review of the elementary cafeteria, we're actually going to hold the Hall of Fame breakfast in the elementary cafeteria this Saturday, starting at 9:00, bringing in all of the inductees and their guests, and then we should be out on the field around 11:00. And speaking of contingency plans, I don't like to do this, but we've got it so that in the event that there's inclement weather, we can pull the outside ceremonies right back into the elementary cafeteria if the weather gets bad. If not, we'll hold it out on the field. Again, the inductees this year are Coach Frank Muller, softballer Sarah Finkbeiner, three-sport athlete Johnny Paulson, and the 66-67 basketball team, which, after long searches, we're confident four or five of them will be showing up. So looking forward to it, and I'd like to invite the public out to the ceremony and the board as well.
Thank you. Anybody else for this evening? Nope, we will move on to our always trusty correspondent, worldwide renown, Jack Henry.
All right, so for the happenings and events tonight, the PSAT exam was given last Friday for, for the most part, all sophomores and juniors. As Mr. Burns just mentioned just a second ago, the Hall of Fame Day is on Saturday. We encourage anyone that can show up at 11:00 for the induction ceremony, and the varsity football game is at 1:00. The junior senior high school homecoming pep rally will be on Friday, October 20th, in the afternoon at the track. And the homecoming dance will be the evening of Saturday, October 21st. Tickets are $5. The junior high dance is from 4:00 to 6:00, and the senior high dance is from 7:00 to 10:00. The Walk to End Alzheimer's is also on Saturday, October 21st, from 8:30 to 12:30 in Montgomery. And the student council is once again hosting their Think Pain Cancer Walk at 9:00 on October 29th. For athletics, the varsity volleyball, soccer, and field hockey teams had games today. The field hockey team tied 0-0 in Antioa earlier today. The varsity cross-country team had a duel, has a duel meet tomorrow in Sawardies. And the varsity football game, as I mentioned, is on Saturday at 1:00. Finally, for fundraisers, the Classic 2026 is selling Gertrude Hawk, and Blue Devils merchandise is now on sale. You can get any piece of merchandise, including hats, shirts, hoodies, and more, the link, and I'm going to get this right this time, tinyurl.com/ecsdmerch, or you can use a QR code.
Thank you, Jack. And when you hear of anybody doing Krispy Kremes, could you send a letter out to see John Burns?
I can work on that, yeah.
Thank you. And move on to our superintendent. Superintendent Wiles?
So I just want to dovetail on the comments about the new cafeteria in the elementary school. There were a couple of questions that came my way about the windows themselves in the cafeteria, and I just want to say this for those that are listening and the board. The windows and the whole approval of that cafeteria was built to code. There was a question that got brought up to me about, has it been up to code since the Coldenham disaster back, you know, 20, 30 years ago? And since then, the codes have changed significantly with state ed. So anything we build and anything we do has to clear state ed. So they are up to code, and they are definitely within the limitations and regulations that have been addressed since that, since then. The windows themselves are tempered glass, so if you throw something to them, they're not going to shatter. They might crack. They are not bulletproof, but we will be installing the same filming on the windows that we're doing with all the other windows, so that is coming. I know there's concerns, it's beautiful, but there are some safety concerns that came up that we are well ahead of and will be addressing, that was planned to have that happen. So all, same thing next year when we put all these windows in, they'll be put in, and then we'll be installing the film that goes over the windows to make them resistant. And Vince, you can talk more about that if you'd like, but that was a question I just wanted that. It's really the only question I got about the physical building. I also want to publicly thank the ALCS Club. You know, year after year, they allow our students to use that facility for fundraising purposes, but they went again a step beyond and did an extremely generous donation to fund and stock up our care closets in our schools, where people can. fund and stock up our ca- care closets in our schools where people can go and get items of care. And we really greatly, a letter was written, we greatly appreciate their dedication to our students and the school very much. Um, and finally, I just want to report out a little bit on the conference, the New York State Council of School Superintendents, a fall conference that, uh, Kelly and I attended. Just a few educational policy issues coming up. Shelley Mayer and, um, somebody from the Assembly, his name, have it here somewhere, Mike Benedetto, were there to share some updates on what's coming up with the legislature. You know, our, one of our biggest sources of funding is Foundation Aid. And over the last two years, if you think back to the budget process, we saw huge increases in those Foundation Aid lines because they, the state fully funded the formula. So that was a, a big windfall for us, but that money was owed to us over the course of many years. But they did make the funding streams whole. The problem with that now is that the funding formulas don't really align. They're using data to fund based on the 20, the 2000 census, so that they're looking at changing and modifying the formulas which need to be done. So they're working on a methodology to do that and there'll be more information coming on that. They also talked about electric school buses and the mandate that we have for electric school buses. There is some grant money that is available to school districts and ours. We've been a little reluctant, um, to be the pioneer in this because there are many schools that don't, that have funding opportunities, but the grid's not strong enough to hold, um, the charging stations and we are fully, um, contracted out with this. So we would, we're looking at what those machinations would be to, do we buy the buses? Give them to Rolling V? Do they buy the buses? How does it get aided? So I know Rondow's ahead of this, but, um, I don't want to have buses sitting in my garage waiting to, um, or someone else's garage waiting to get them, you know, up and coming. We're hearing that there's going to be a extension. Uh, you're supposed to have all the buses or starting to get the buses in 2027. And NYSARDA is supposed to be coming out with a roadmap, um, for schools to follow to get to that, having electric buses. There's a lot of concerns with regard to timelines and restrictions and no one's done anything yet to, um, modify the mandate. I will tell you that they're telling us that funds will also be available through the Inflation Reduction Act. And while I'm talking about the Inflation Reduction Act and the amount of money that, that's out there, um, we can expect to see in the next couple of years, some additional mandates that probably will be unfunded. But the state is talking about getting schools to move ahead with upgrades to HVAC, but specifically air conditioning, because it's getting hotter and, um, they'd like to see some regulations that go along with that. And one of the things that was brought up, that if they're going to do that, they should, that's a huge amount of money. You know, when we looked at this a few years ago, I think it was four to $5 million at the time to air condition our buildings. We have air conditioners in our, in our classrooms, we have window units. So we're not sure what those regulations will be, but that's something that could be coming down as, um, as legislation, but we'll have to see during this round of legislative sessions what happens. And they are also talking about a universal pre-K. While we started it, the funding formulas and the funding streams are very complicated. So you might, like, we have an allocation of $775,000, but if you break it down to our per pupil cost, it comes out to about $11,000. So it's a complicated funding stream that gets, not everyone can access all those funds. So they are looking to simplify it. Uh, they're also looking at better funding formulas for after school programs. Uh, they talked about the inequity of arts, music, gyms and sports in school districts. And they're talking about trying to get some money, um, towards those programs and just a, a lot coming down the pike. And I thought I'd just report out education policy stuff. I'm sure we'll hear more about this as the session begins and we keep moving through that, but it will be sure to keep you apprised.
Iris?
So now that the, um, DeWelly property has been signed off on and purchased, we can expect then to hear from them about the old schoolhouse and finishing up with that?
Yep, we, we did reach out to our attorneys to reach out to them to, I think they said November, if I was not mistaken, that we, um, you know, back last year that we should be able to close and we have no reason to believe we won't be able to do that.
Great, okay, thanks.
And there's quite a bit of money already in escrow. Well, we, yeah, so, so we have received some.
I know, they put a down payment down, but just to finish the whole circle, it'd be done.
And file the deed this time.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea, too.
Thank you. Uh, we will move on to our.
Mr. President?
Yes, I'm sorry, John.
Just, just a comment, uh, Madam Superintendent, our experience tells us that the mandates and the added caveats that come from the governor and the state ed commissioner in the form of threats, if they're not followed, uh, far outpace the financial monies that come with it to achieve all of these things. And, uh, NISBA just put out a newsletter saying that there are a ton of mandates coming forward. I just don't understand, everybody knows the electric buses are not gonna work. Central Hudson tells us they can't handle the grid. Uh, the Ulster County Superintendent has described to several school boards that this could potentially break the smaller districts, that a bus that we have now costs about $150,000, $160,000, will run for 10 to 12 years on gas. An electric bus will cost us over $450,000. And with all of the problems that come with that, uh, the batteries, the cost of replacing the batteries, um, the fact that they have to be built so far apart from other buses with a cover, because if one goes on fire, they all go on fire. I mean, this just isn't gonna work. And my question to you is, are the superintendents gonna do something? And, and I know, listen, I get it, just like the past governor, this governor will bring retaliation for those that question. But we have to stand up at some point and say this isn't, this isn't gonna work, whether it's our buses or Rolling V buses. If Rolling V has to buy electric buses, they're gonna pass the cost on to us. I believe that the cost of these buses minus whatever miniscule money we get from the state has to be approved by our colleagues, our, our voters. I can't see our voters increasing the budget by that just to meet some silly mandate because they think the world is getting hotter in the next year or two. It's just not gonna work. And I think it's time that we stand up and say to them, we appreciate your concerns, but we've got a lot more issues in education than worrying about electric buses. It's just not gonna happen. And they're not addressing it, they're avoiding all types of questions right now.
So the New York State Council of Superintendents is, does, is and has been bringing the concerns to the table of the legislatures, legislature and Assembly and Democrats and also the governor. And I think there's some traction. I know the Mid Hudson School Study Council has, is putting the superintendents across the four county region here, actually five county region, putting together a platform about how this is not gonna work on the timeline. And there are concerns, because what I failed to say, I don't think at the beginning, they're estimating an eight to nine billion dollar deficit in the budget by the time they roll into next year. So to continue to have districts, um, or to, to say that we're gonna do this and know that there's a deficit of some kind is not fiscally responsible. So there are, the, the superintendents are through their, um, through our, our conferences and not actual conferences, but through the subcommittees and also the organization, they are definitely getting the information to the state. And I think they're listening, but I think they have to figure out how to undo the things that they've done so far or push this out to give everyone a lot more time to figure out how to do it correctly. Cause right now, we will not meet the 2027, there's no way, 2027 is three, three years away. There's no way we're gonna have this together. It takes by the, just to give us a point of reference, our referendum was passed in 2019. It's 2023, four years later, and we just got our cafeteria open. And yes, there was COVID, yes, there were all kinds of obstacles with state ed, but it is a slow process. There is no way in 2023, in four years, we're gonna have this type of, and we just won't. I mean, we don't, we won't. And we're not gonna be the only ones. And I think they know it, they've been relying on the NYSARDA. And yes, John, the superintendents are taking a stand and, but, you know, we can voice our opinions and they make the laws. So we're, we're not, we can't, you cannot squeeze blood out of a stone.
I get, with all due respect.
We're not, we're not going to be able to, to fund something like that and nor are they.
With all due respect, um, I can understand they're in a jam. They've made the call, they've issued the mandates, but, and I'd forgive them if they apologize, they don't have to worry about that. But I don't think that the, the superintendent's saying we can't meet it in this timeline because we're not gonna be able to meet it. We're not gonna be able to meet it in four years or 10 years. It's not, it's just not gonna be able possible. I think everybody realizes that, the cost is prohibitive. Um, and I just think they need to be very clear. And again, I would offer that we could pass a resolution as a board, uh, showing that we disapprove of it, but I know you would tell me that they'd come back and cut our budget, so.
I, I don't, I'm not sure that they cut our budget over that if we tell them that we're not gonna file a mandate. I think that they're taking their position, their certain positions with certain districts about not doing that. But I think that this is something we can look at and see. I'd like to see what NISBA's putting out. Um, and I think it's better when you have a number of school districts putting things out like this. I will definitely look into that and, and see what we can put forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to Assistant Superintendent for Business, Vince Napoli.
Thank you, and thank you for the accolades for the cafeteria. I know the cafeteria, it's magnificent. When you go in there, it, it just kind of blows you away. I spent the morning and all of lunch with the children and the staff. And the, the joy and the smiles and the great time that the children had coming into the new cafeteria was, was so heartwarming. We served close to 400 breakfasts this morning. That set a record. And for our food service staff, our contractor witnesses to be able to handle that load and with our four cafeteria monitors that were, that were working this morning, I, I got to hand out trays and good morning to every child that came through my line. And I have to tell you that it was indescribable how great of a feeling it was. Lunch was just as good. Sue and I went down and, and we had a cafeteria lunch. Uh, we saw you there, I had a salad, I think it was hamburgers today for lunch. We had a couple glitches, but I have to tell you that it was a outstanding day and, and for the first day of our new cafeteria and I look forward to many more. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, we will move on to Deputy Superintendent, Kelly White.
Good evening. Um, I just want to remind the community that through the month of October, we'll be conducting the required annual digital equity survey. So we've been giving this, this will be our third administration. And this is where we have to canvass data from each student in the district to report on their access to devices in their home and the suitability, um, of the Wi, of the Wi-Fi in their home if they have it. Um, there will be a change to the administration this year in an effort to increase participation. This is something that other districts in the area has done. Um, so our PK through six students, um, the parents will be emailed a link, um, at the end of October for those parents that it did not respond, we'll send a hard copy version of the survey home. Um, and for students in grade seven through 12, they will complete the survey during the school day. And it's a, it's a brief survey and it's simple questions that a, a child would be, you know, a student in ages seven through 12 would be able to answer. Additionally, I know I mentioned this in the last board meeting, but I want to, um, repeat it, we have our college fair coming up this month. I think it's the 24th, I don't have the flyer. 24, thank you. Coming up on the 24th, we have, um, 50 colleges attending the event. Um, so we're super excited for that. Again, we partnered with CASDA this year to, um, help organize the event and, uh, we're looking forward to a great showcase for our students. And lastly, um, within board docs are the contracts for Go Beyond Greatness. That's, um, the college and career readiness program that we've been partnering with for the last couple of years. Frank Mulhern works closely with their director, Ashley Knox. Um, and I had provided the board with the program outcomes reports over the summer. We've been getting really positive feedback from the students who engage in those programs. So we're hoping to get those contracts approved tonight so that, uh, programming can kick off, uh, later this month.
Thank you. We will move on to personnel resolutions for this evening. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Amanda Moransky's request for non-paid leave absence be granted for the period of October 1, 2, 2023 through November 1st, 2023. It's been moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that following substitute personnel be appointed for the 2324 school year.
Some moved.
Been moved. Second, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Be resolved that the resolution dated 7/12/23, under Personnel 5.14 be amended to reflect authorization of 14 hours per week for Jessica Graham to attend before school activities with student number two.
Some moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that Harriet Sticko be approved as a one-to-one aide to attend before school activities with student number two.
Some moved.
Been moved. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Upon a recommendation, Superintendent of Schools be resolved that the attached list of junior, senior high school extended day programs be approved at the contractual rate for the 2324 school year.
Some moved.
Been moved. Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Discussion. John?
We've, uh, Mr. President, we've been getting reports back on the, um, tutoring that's been going on in the elementary school and things like that. Kelly, have we gotten any reports back on progress made or not made in extended day programs?
That was the report that Ms. I gave with Ms. Mar, that toward the.
Right, that's all part of this part then? Okay, thank you.
Iris?
I just wanted to know, extended days, so that's morning and afternoon and that's every day? You know, I don't know the parameters really of it. As long as it's existed here, I still don't know what the parameters are.
It depends on the, the offering. Um, it usually says, um, on, um, the sheet when they put a, a letter of interest in what days it's going to operate, um, but it's really program dependent. Some of them, um, are only a handful of days a week, some of them are daily, it really, it's a.
And it's the principals who decide the length of the program and the, you know, all of the details of that?
Yeah, when they put together a proposal for a new extended day program, it states in there like how often, a lot, many of them are like two days a week for an hour after school, I think is pretty standard for the elementary school.
Or an hour before.
Yeah, or, or before. But, um, the high school extended day, a lot of those run like Monday through Thursday. We know a lot of students don't stay after on Friday.
Nobody comes before school.
Yeah, and.
Uh, that's for the high school, uh, junior high. And the assignment to these classes, is it voluntary on the part of students or are they assigned by their teachers? How do students end up in extended day?
For the elementary school, um, there's a recommendation letter that'll go home for the parents, um, for the academic focus programs and the, um, like the youth, the youth group, the Blue Devil Boys and Girls Youth Group, those are recommendations. But then there are some, um, depending if the teachers signed up to, uh, facilitate them, that any students that are interested in, that they can sign up for. Um, for the junior, senior high, it's more walk-in, it's not any, um, it's not like a signup or anything. A lot of times it's students, you know, needing extra help on a topic that may have been recently presented, test corrections, lab makeups, um, studying for a test with the teacher prior to the, the test being administered, getting help on an essay. So that's more like an, um, on, as needed basis. But the teachers will make recommendations as well. But the teachers will make recommendations as well for students to attend extended day.
Okay, thank you.
Danny?
So for the high school senior day, it's going to be after school? There's nothing early?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries.
Mr. President, point of order, could you just read the item that we're going through so we can follow when we're doing this? Yes, you just used to do that, and now we're just going through them.
All right.
If you could just, I'm sorry, if you could just read it.
6.7. Come on.
6.6.
6.6? Well, no, that's the one we just voted on.
You voted on junior, senior. You have to vote on the elementary now.
Yeah, I know, I'm trying to get this to come up. All right, so 6.6. Upon a recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved the attached list of elementary school extended-day programs be approved at the contractual rate for the 2324 school year.
Motion to table.
Second. Discussion.
I, I think that some of us on the board have questions on this and would like time to discuss it, and that's for my motion to table.
Any other board members want to be heard on it?
So when do we discuss it?
Next meeting. Comes back to, it comes back to the table the next meeting. You can discuss right now as to whether you want a table or don't want a table and what your reasons for it.
Uh, excuse me, I'm sorry. What, I, well, then I would make a motion, we go into executive session, to discuss it.
There's a, well, first we have to deal with a motion that's tabled. If you want to withdraw that, we can entertain a motion.
I will draw, I will draw that motion, make a motion to go back into executive session for 10 minutes.
Is that good for the second? Would you withdraw?
Yes.
Okay. The motion's been withdrawn. We have a new motion, Mr. Burns, make your motion.
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
For the purpose of?
Discussing personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? We're in executive session. We will return to public session. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 6.8 memorandum of agreement. Upon a recommendation superintendent of schools be resolved that the memorandum of agreement between the Allenville Central School District and ETS RPA, ETA unit be approved as attached to 2324-23. Been moved? Do I have a second? Do I have a second going one?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Discussion, go ahead, John.
This is on the sixth class, correct?
This is on memorandum of agreement, 6.8, yep. Sixth period.
Okay. I certainly appreciate the fact that our teachers are willing to take on the sixth period, but I don't think it fixes the problem, Lisa, of us being short teachers. And, listen, again, I've been a teacher, I appreciate their efforts. I know that the more classes you teach above the normal five, it gets tougher, and I know they're doing the best they can, but we need to find a solution to the problem of not having these, because I think right now, offhand, I can think of four, five, or six teachers that are doing the sixth period, it might be more.
I don't, I don't think so.
We've approved a bunch last year, so it just, it's tough. It's tough for them and it's tough for the kids, so I appreciate it, but I hope we can find a solution. I know teachers are in the shortage right now, and it's a tough job, but that's just what I want to say. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under policy resolutions for this evening, resolve that this be considered the second and final reading of the following policies, 3420, 3421, 6120, 6121, 6122. It's been moved. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under budget resolutions for this evening.
Motion to move 8-1 and 8-2.
Second.
Been moved and seconded discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under education resolutions for this evening, student IEPs 9.1 be resolved the attached list of student IEPs.
So moved.
Been moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those, yep, sorry, sorry. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under construction resolutions for this evening.
Motion to move 10-1, 10-2, and 10-3.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Field trip under 11.2 has already been, 11.1 rather, senior class trip. We did that one already, under 11.2, resolve that the students participating in seventh and eighth grade junior high band be approved to travel out of state to the High Note Music Festival in Allentown, Pennsylvania, May 31st, 2024. It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 11.3, resolve students participating in the senior high school music department grades 912 be approved to travel out of state to the Music in the Parks Festival located in Agawam, Massachusetts on May 17th, 2024. Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Got to tell you, what a place to go to, Agawam. 11.4, disposal of kitchen equipment. Somebody want to move that?
No.
Been moved?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion.
What equipment exactly is it, Mr. President?
It's supposed to have been the pictures.
Oh, we got pictures? Never mind.
Yes, go.
So how do we advertise this, this stuff? I mean, that equipment in particular is, only comes once every 40 years, so.
Well, I can't.
I'm just wondering how we promote the sale of that stuff.
We use a website, Auctions International.
So locally, people locally don't get a heads up unless they look at that website.
Correct. Oftentimes, it's word of mouth. We've sold things before, and the word gets out, like, whether it's ground equipment or various different things, and people bid on it. Word gets out.
There's just something about it being all this restaurant equipment that is, you know, rarely comes out of the school that maybe local restaurants might be interested in, but we can't give them a heads up?
Sure.
Out of, out of just consideration that they're local, and is it possible for you to just let them know the restaurants in the area that this equipment is, is out there?
Sure, we have a, we have a list of restaurants that we send letters to. I can certainly give them a heads up to check Auctions International for food services equipment that's being sold.
I'd like you to do that if, if, you know, if it's okay to do that.
Point of information. Yes. I don't think it's reasonable to just notify the restaurant owners that we're doing this because someone that's not a restaurant owner might want a shot at doing this, and to at least to, to Iris's point, more people get involved. Why can't we just put out an announcement that we're auctioning this off in the general public, and then everybody, everybody would know on the website, maybe in the newspaper, just to let people know? If you, if you specifically give it to the restaurant people, that's as bad as putting it on some website that nobody ever heard of. I know that people have bid on certain items that we do in the past, but again, they're within the district and they know it. To be fair to everybody, and maybe we get the greatest return on our money, we advertise it and put it that way, and that would take care, Iris.
Well, you know, just, I would like the local people, whether restaurant or not, I mean, I just, we generally don't have that kind of equipment for sale, and I imagine it's valuable to people who could use it, so I just would like.
I understand, yeah, I'll, I'll come up with different ways to let people know to check that website.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Jody?
I just want to make sure that we're not, wherever we advertise, that we have to remember, we, if we're going to start doing this, that we're going to have to do it for other equipment, such, we have our lawn stuff, so I don't know if we could just put an announcement on our website or on Facebook, something short and sweet, because I think it's just starting something that we're going to have to keep up with, because we're doing, we do this quite frequently with a lot of things.
Could I ask for a table to, a motion to table this resolution? There's some information that just came forward about some of the, one piece of equipment that we need to be sure that we can access, so can I get a motion to table?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to table discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. It's tabled. Come back on the 24th. 11.5, D-HIC 2024 trust agreement. Can I get somebody to move that? Been moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. 11.6, non-resident tuition contract upon a recommendation superintendent of schools. Been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. John?
Yeah, I hate to bring this up again, but I think we should revisit this. We're having trouble finding teachers, we're having trouble finding staff in every area. I, I think that some districts have done this, that coming to our district, we allow people who work out of town, from out of town, to bring their kids to our district would be a big incentive. I know we've been over this. I think it's worth looking at again, that, you know, working with teachers that are secondary teachers that have the ability to pick up their kids from elementary, that works out fine. Elementary teachers that have kids that are secondary some places, it makes it more difficult to get kids transportation, especially kids that do extracurricular activities and everything. I just think that it's time we take a look again at, you know, one of the, one of the things they said at the last conference I was at was, you want to make your place, your district, as attractive as possible to candidates. We have a lot of the same things that other districts offer, and so I think that that would be something I'd like to take a look at in the future. Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Get somebody to move 11-7 through 11-14, it's all boilerplate contractual.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Next meeting, mark your calendars, October 24th, 2023. Anybody, anything, anybody like to see on the agenda? Make sure those two tabled motions reappear under the table motion section. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned.